Move to open.
Is there a second?
Second.
See, Mike's trying to unmute himself, I think. There we go.
There you go, second.
Neil.
Roll call vote.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker? JR Colby, yes. This is JR Colby, Chairman of Newbury Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jeff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator?
Yes.
Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator?
Yes.
Martha Tanner, Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Marshall Jessperson, Finance Committee?
Yes.
Linda Allen, Finance Committee?
Linda's absent.
Tom Howard, Finance Committee?
Yes.
Joe Ali, Finance Committee? We got Joe included. KBS Day Finance Committee?
Joe's here.
Okay.
Jean Case, Finance Committee?
Yes.
Erica Jacobson, Finance Committee?
Yes.
And Mike Volpon, Recreation Committee? And I see Mike, but he's muted.
He's giving you a thumbs up.
Right. Good evening. This open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted virtually, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 2020, in the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting, where to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by Zoom. Meeting link is posted on the agenda on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line to board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, promotions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that generates accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you, and be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. The chairperson and vice chairperson will afford the public comment for a period of three minutes and will be granted as follows. Participation will be sought through the raise hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Have your cursor in this area, or if you don't see it. The participants' window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see a list of phone and video participants, and on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants can use their phones keypad while in a Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star nine. Those who have requested to be heard through the raise hand function will be heard in the order of which they are listed. The system lists in order by whom first hit the raise hand function. Please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and then your question or comment. You will be unmuted and your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raising column. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So Tracy, do we have any raised hands?
I do, Mr. Manchin.
Okay. Hi, Steve. You're muted.
Steve's muted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we have.
Two things somewhat related. I'm seeing out in Plum Island, more and more Airbnb rentals going up, which are causing a disproportionate increase in the value of the homes out here. Also, it's money that is going to private citizens that the town doesn't get any benefit from. And it's just an issue I'd like you all to be thinking about down the road, about the implications for Airbnbs, and what is a residential community. Likewise, just keep in mind that Plum Island, or please keep in mind that Plum Island is a residential community, and some of the impetus to make more business opportunities available out here disrupt the concept of this being a residential community, and not a business community like downtown Newburyport. That said, the other thing I'd like to get at a, in a clear statement, if not tonight, but certainly in advance of town meeting, is a clear statement, and perhaps the Finance Committee Chair Marshall can weigh in as well. A clear statement as to whether the expected and understandable and good costs, I emphasize good cost, of the police station are yet being reflected in the tax bills that are being sent out. Is this something that's coming down the road, or is it already being seen in our current tax structure? And with that, I'll say thank you, and please mute me.
Thank you, Steve. Tracy, would you like to enlighten us on the tax impact and how it's working right now?
The tax impact has not been felt yet by the taxpayers. We're only, the only thing that's on the rate right now is the short-term borrowings. So this will be this 2020, 2022 will be the first year that they feel, they'll feel the full impact of the debt payments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman Jessperson has his hand raised?
Yes, Marshall.
Thank you. In this meeting, I'm taking this as a joint meeting between FinCom and the Select Board. Are we gonna wait for our next meeting before we go over the minutes of our last FinCom meeting, or are we going to do that tonight? I mean, it's only gonna be next week.
Yeah, the meeting, I don't have the minutes available for tonight's meeting.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Thank you. Carry on.
Okay. We don't have an emergency management director's update tonight. We're gonna move to the joint meeting with the Finance Committee to review and vote to execute the annual town meeting warrant. Would you like to open the Finance Committee side of the meeting, Marshall?
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the Finance Committee meeting.
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor? And we'll go for a roll call vote. Erica? Okay, a thumbs up will do. Okay, Erica's, yes, Jean? Yes? Tom?
Yes.
Joe? I can't see you, and I can't hear you, Joe. And I mean, yes, and we'll leave that out, okay?
Joe is a yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Okay. All right, so we've opened the meeting, we have established a quorum. There are five of us, so we, that five out of seven makes a quorum, and we're ready to go.
Okay.
Back to you.
We have three Warren articles to cover tonight. We had citizen petition come in, which is Article Five, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Newbury general bylaws to require a two-thirds vote of town meeting members to adopt or amend all changes to Chapter 95 Wetlands Bylaw, sponsored by Bob Connors. Identify a motion, so we can have discussion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Yeah. All right, discussion on the Select Board side.
Do we, do we discuss ten-man petitions? I forgot. We do?
Well, we discussed Halloween, so I didn't want to be remiss in leaving it off, you know what I mean? And honestly, that's the way I, that's the way I considered it. So, I mean, if the board thinks it's better moving on and leaving it to the will of the town, that's fine with me. I just figured it was worth bringing up, so I didn't miss anything.
I think it should be the will, the will of the town.
Yeah. Is Mr. Connors here tonight to explain his back, what he, why, what he's looking for?
I don't believe so.
Okay, it's like this, that would be, I mean, something dropped the last minute, it would be nice to have the person that drops it here.
Okay.
But I'll go with the will of the town.
All right. Any other discussion? So, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Well, I move that we say will of the town, I guess, because Mike only moved discussion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the will of the town.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, so we can, so we can have a vote on it. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes, the will of the town. Okay, Marshall, any discussion from the FinCom side?
Well, let's open it up, and we do have KB, Sarah has just joined us, so. Welcome KB, good to have you. So, any comments, discussion from the Finance Committee? I don't think this is going to impact the finances of the town. Anyone else?
No?
Comments?
Okay, from the Finance Committee, then, what I'll do is entertain either a yes, no, or will of the town, and we'll start with Erica.
Will of the town, please.
Jean?
Will of the town.
Joe? There we go. Okay, Joe? Okay, we'll, we'll come back. Tom?
Will of the town.
Okay, I'll go with that. KB?
Will of the town.
All right. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Okay, we'll move to Article 21, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 or any other sum from free cash to construct a basketball court at the Central Street Recreation Area, or take any other action in relation there, too. I believe we also have Mike Volpon here tonight to comment on this.
Thanks, yeah. Um, the process. I think we have.
Yeah, identify a motion.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Just so we can open discussion.
Mike's muted.
What do we ask for? A second, second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be mute myself a lot tonight because I got a really bad cough, so.
That's okay. It's, so, we don't have a lot on here, so that's, we have time, no problem. Okay, discussion, I guess I'll simplify this thing. We'll move a yes or no, or will of the town. All right, kick us off, Mike. You can, you can roll us into this.
Okay, thank you all. We've been working on this project for two years. We got the approval, we thought was enough money come August last year. We, we hired a consultant to come in to put all this stuff together for us and get an idea. Unfortunately, because of all the COVID situation and the rising costs of construction materials and transportation, the original bid we had put out, we thought would be enough, wasn't. We then resubmitted it back out and adjusted to additional alternatives, and the lowest bid we received in the two bidding process was $128,000, just under $128,200, which is about little over $19,000 over what we have currently in the account for the $90,000 we received from the town and $19,100 and change from donations from both an anonymous donor and the Trent Youth Basketball Program. So, we currently are short on this to try to get it done. We're concerned if we don't get this underway, the chances of it ever happening, I think, are gonna be gone. So what we're hoping for is the current low bid allows for the court without the versa court on top of it, and only two baskets. We were hoping, as the committee, after July 1, to take the money out necessary, which is about an additional $10,500 to have the four other hoops installed, and then additional money here to get hopefully the versa court or whatever to get this done.
Okay.
What we talked to the town about.
Any discussion or questions from the board of selectmen, Select Board?
So Mike, can you explain what the difference between asphalt and a versa court is?
An asphalt court is, is the base that the use, which is used by a lot of other courts. It's not as forgiving as the versa court. It also doesn't last as long. The versa court has the ability to be changed in and changed out a lot easier. If parts are either ruined over the years, but we're hoping this court's gonna last us at least 20 years. But it is an additional expense to have it added. It also, it's a lot more attractive. You're gonna see a lot more schools and organizations, leagues that will be willing to sign up to play in leagues that are on that, instead of just a straight asphalt court.
Any other questions from the board?
We did spend a lot of time on this, just to get it, to make sure we, we thought we had the right scenario. That's why we invested in the consultant.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, just a quick, Michael, so the idea is that this type of upgrade will actually pay for itself, right?
That's correct.
So that's what we should probably make claim.
Yes.
I will, I'll go, go through the board for a roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
So, all right, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
So, I was, I had my finger up to talk. I wasn't ready to vote.
Okay, go ahead.
So, question, so we've got $90,000 on the table.
We have 109, 109,100 and change on the table we have.
And then, and then how much more are you gonna need? Another 50?
To get to the minimum base bid, so we can accept it, because unfortunately, the town meeting happens beyond 30-day window. We're hoping to use some money from the additional revolving fund, along with what we have in our account right now, just to get the minimum bid, so we can get the work started, and then the additional 50 would then cover the other four hoops, as well as the versa court.
I put, I, I, Mike, I love the idea, okay, but right, this year is not the time to come for more money, because, I mean, it's for a basketball court, because so much stuff is going on, with, we don't know the budget's coming down the road. So, I'm sorry, I would love to support it, but not this year, so I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's a no.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? What article number are we working on? I'm sorry, I lost it on the?
21.
21? Is that number correct? It says transfer the sum of $90,000. Shouldn't that be 50?
It was, in the first rendition.
Okay, okay.
That went out, it was 90, it was a typo.
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. I'll go through the vote again. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle? And JR Colby, yes. Marshall?
Okay, from the Finance Committee side, a couple of questions, Michael. When we first went through this, you had a, an effort at fundraising. How did that go?
Well, we didn't know until what we had the availability. We didn't know what we were gonna have for a budget. Marshall, that was the thing. We thought we, based on the consultant's work from his going out to the town, we thought we were more than under budget. And then when he came back, we saw the first round of bids go up in February, and the low bid came in $133,000. We're like, something's going, or actually it was $139,000. We knew we, we couldn't even get to there at that point. So we reset it up to bid, we removed the four hoops from the original option, and we got down to 128. So yes, pending this meeting or whatever, I plan on getting to the newspaper and start working on this, but I, if we can't even get to the minimum bid, there's no chance in even pursuing the hoop, the court, because we only have 30 days.
Okay, so you're, you're at a 128,000 minimum bid, of which you have, sorry?
It's 128.2 to be making, to make it easiest, 128, 174.
Okay, 128.2, and my understanding is that you have an available funds?
109, 1.
109.
Change.
Point one. Okay, so you're basically short 20,000.
Yes. And that does include the additional four courts. It would also bring in the additional money that we're looking to do, which we're gonna pull from our account come July 1, if we don't get it beforehand.
Understood. Let me get on to my next question. If you get the minimum bid done and you get the court up, what is the difference between having the four hoops now and having the four hoops after you have the ability to raise some funds on your own to get them, or to get them from your revolving fund?
How do you install? Where they're gonna have to pre-drill the holes and get it done, but it may not be as firmly set and put in place. We're hoping to get it all done with the original work, so it'll all be warranted at that point.
I'm gonna go back and ask the question again. What is the difference in cost, or do you have the difference in cost between going for the four now and the four later?
Same, same price that we've been told as of right now. It's, we just don't know how, who's gonna be able to install them, and we haven't figured out who can do, who can do the work, and who can put them in.
Other questions from anyone on the Finance Committee? Oh, Linda, welcome. Linda Allen has joined us.
If anything. Mike, there's no guarantees that once the court is put in, that any additional hoops that are put in are going to take and be sturdy or not affect what's already in there. Is that correct?
We don't think there'll be any, any problems with it, but I can't guarantee that where, if we had them installed during the initial installation, one, they'd be under warranty that we're getting, getting done with this, as well as we wouldn't have any delays in waiting for it. Instead, you're gonna have a court that would probably be done ahead of time, and then we're gonna have to find a way to get the other four done at most likely the availability of the DPW.
So right now you need 20, but if you did the four courts, you'd need the 50.
Right now, we're at 109. To get the minimum bids 128, we have to add 10, 10 and a half more to the basketball hoop, and if we wanted the versus, an additional 28,000, 28 and a half.
Okay, thanks.
This would all be done by one group that's already been bid out, and we can get that done.
Hey, Mike, it's KB. A quick question is, you, you said that there's a return. You think that people are gonna pay for using these courts, correct?
Yes, we plan on, similar to what we have, that's why we're having them down at the soccer fields. We plan on, on working with both the Triton Youth, Triton Youth Programs, as well as Triton Athletics. We talked to the AD over there and working to try to see if we can have leagues come in. If anything, to try to keep more people in the area, but it also gives them another opportunity if we want to set up leagues, whatever. And maybe split the proceeds between the both.
Okay, do you have an estimate on what you think you can generate?
I, I mean, I'm hoping anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000 a year.
I got you.
Maybe, maybe more, but we haven't, we've never had this here, so it's never been done yet.
Okay, so midpointed at $10,000, a five-year return back on the 50 that the town basically provides.
We certainly hope so, because we're planning.
Michael?
Hey, Mike, hey, Mike, it's Joe. Is there any additional fundraising being?
Joe, yes, as soon as we found out that we were gonna be over, we needed to find, I wasn't gonna start putting it out there to find out if we could raise money, because I know we're under a 30-day clock in trying to raise it, but I have been reaching out to people to find out if we can start doing this, as well as with the newspaper and getting our story out there to try to generate, but we also didn't expect to be, we thought we'd be, the 90,000 was gonna be more than enough, including the contingency. The 128 doesn't even include a contingency at this point. We're just trying to see if we can get it off the ground, and then go from there. Yes, we do plan on starting soon as we know we can meet the minimum bid.
Got it.
Mike?
Yeah.
We still have the ability for, even though that is going to be busy at that location, you know, residents are still gonna have time to just be able to go over there and shoot some hoops, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because that's.
I'll be one of the first ones over there.
Yeah, good, me too.
So.
Chairman Jessperson, Jean Case has raised his hand.
Yep. Just recognize him.
It seems to me that it certainly would probably be more cost-effective to do it early. And, and it seems to me that it would also be result ultimately in a better install. And it would move you into your fundraising probably a lot quicker. Are those three things accurate?
Spot on.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It has to do with a clarification. I don't know if you were gonna bring it up or not. The question I raised with you earlier.
Yes.
We, when we met last time, the Finance Committee never made a motion on any of the articles. We simply voted. I'm not sure that that, I'm looking for a clarification, whether or not that is an acceptable action on the part of the Finance Committee, or do we have to go back and formally make a motion on each of the articles? I, I, I'm leaning towards thinking that we do need to do that, but I, I don't have the legal answer.
Okay, let me, let me just clarify that a little bit, because that vote was brought up on each of the articles after the Select Board had voted on those articles.
Right.
So, we had piggybacked on their motion, whether that is legal or not is the question, or proper, and whether we have to go back and redo that. And Tracy, do you have a, an opinion on that, one way or the other?
I don't know whether or not it's, it's legal, but you can certainly, excuse me, you can certainly vote this evening, make a motion to, you know, approve the votes as counted at the last meeting. And if everyone votes, then that's a legal motion.
I do have, well, I have those votes, so we have them in the minutes for our next meeting, so we can hold that. We can make that motion after we've finished with the articles that we have to vote on today, and, and for each of those articles, I will make that motion. Okay. Anything more on, on the $50,000 for the basketball court from Finance Committee? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to vote on the $50,000 addition to the basketball courts at Mantle Field.
So I'm both.
Second.
Opening second. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, and welcome Linda, your first vote of this evening. So we'll start with Erica.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Jean?
Yes.
Joe?
Joe is a yes.
Thank you, Joe. Tom?
Yes.
Good. KB?
Yes.
Linda?
I'll email to you.
Yes.
Lots of tweets.
Okay, I'll go a yes on that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's yours.
Okay, we'll move on to Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 11, Section 90. Article eleven, section ninety seven dash eleven C of the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw by revising the current subsection C as follows with new language indicated. By bold, underline and deleted language indicated by a strike through. So um. I'll simplify this. Let's um. Let's have some discussion and questions, then I'll move to a vote. So any questions on Article? Twenty three.
Um, I move to accept Article twenty. Three.
Yeah, could you just read that one more time?
Just to see if the town will vote to amend. Article eleven, section ninety seven dash eleven C of the Town of Newbury zoning by law. By revising the current subsection C as follows with new language indicated by bold, underline and deleted language indicated by a strike.
Okay, I'll second what Alicia said.
Okay, um. I'm gonna move to a vote. Is there a second on moving to a vote?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, Alicia Greco.
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Uh, excuse me, Chairman. Um, I have just thought of something. Should we just be will of the town as well?
I mean, that's really I I mean, personally, I I voted to support it and I would vote to support it again, so I guess that's just on the particular. Board.
Okay, so it it doesn't have to be will of the town. Okay. I'm good then.
Okay. Marshall?
Okay, just a second. Um, and this is Article twenty two.
Three.
Three, twenty three. Comment or discussion from the phone count? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to uh. Vote on Article twenty three. I have a motion.
My motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll be seconded. So we'll go a roll call vote, Erica?
Uh, yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Good. KV?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I will put a yes in there. Okay.
My motion was will of the town. You got that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, that concludes our business for tonight, I believe.
I.
Little to adjourn.
I have a.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jean.
Final question.
Yes.
Did the the Finance Committee vote on Article twenty three?
That was Article twenty three.
That was.
I mean, I I'm sorry.
Two, two. Okay.
Did we?
Yep.
All right, let me check. I just happen to have that.
Julie, do you have that vote recorded from the minutes last time?
The reason I raised that question.
Yep, go ahead.
Is it sort of went by me at the last meeting? Has to do with the section sixteen being omitted from the bylaw.
Yep, continue.
My concern there is as as far as I can see. There is no place that there's a requirement. For the Board of Selectmen. Or the Select Board. To submit the bu- their budget proposal to the Finance Committee. And that, I believe, is clearly a requirement somewhere. Uh, but but this seems to. This language, omitting this language seems to eliminate that.
Um, the purpose of the change wasn't to exclude the Finance Committee. It was to change the number. The 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 days it it. It dictates the number of days and we don't have our budget information available at that time. Um, and what happens actually in practice now is the Finance Committee and the Select Board get it at the same time.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I think to maintain what we should maintain as. As in. As our independence, as the Finance Committee.
Sure.
That we should deliberate on that budget and we should have it. In adequate time. It this eliminates the entire section. If if you I have no problem changing. The language with respect to how soon the budget needs to be submitted. But I think it's important that there be some language. That that directs that. The the Finance Committee receives a budget by a certain period. There is none.
Yeah.
It's only by. The last few years that we've chosen to meet with the Board, Select Board, to hear the presentation. But we have voted oftentimes separately from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, it removes us entirely from the necessity of getting the budget, and I think we just have to clean up that language a little bit. Get rid of the seventy fifth day before the annual town meeting, and I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
You see what we're?
Yep.
What he's talking about. Okay. So I I would say that's probably a Scrivener's error.
I got you.
Yeah, Scrivener's error.
A little big.
There are a lot.
How do we have to kind of do that tonight?
Yes.
That's what my thought is. So.
Yep.
Jean, I'll look to you to to fix that up right now. I'm teasing you.
Looking to me?
I'm teasing you.
I I you can eliminate the date. I mean, you can eliminate the change it. I don't know. What would be more reasonable? Tracy might have a suggestion.
Chairman Colby, if I may. Um, the following changes shall be made. The Select Board shall transmit a copy of the budget together with its recommendation relative thereto to each member of the Finance Committee. So you would want just what that would do is it would say the Select Board would have to take action on and their votes and then provide that document. To the Finance Committee, so you wouldn't not need to meet jointly anymore, I guess, is that?
Well, we could. We could still meet jointly to hear your presentation on the budget. And but I just think there that you you, you know, the Finance Committee needs to act. Separately and I have that budget to deal with separately. Um. And I would have, I'm not sure if it's necessary. Do we need to have a time there, a time limit?
Um, I would I would suggest, Jean, that we say the Select Board. Shall transmit a copy of the budget together with its recommendation relative thereto to each member of the Finance Committee immediately upon. Voting that or by joint meeting. So that we will be.
Guys are cleaning up and just wanna put a plate together.
When they would uh. Discuss it and 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 be there, so that would get it to us or they would get it to us immediately thereafter.
I think our joint read, our joint budget meetings are helpful. I mean.
Yes, oh, I'm not. I'm not questioning that, Chairman.
I can remember when we didn't do that, and I think it's very important to meet with each other.
I I'm not. I'm not negating that at all. That was not my intention.
How about if we just remove with its recommendation relative thereto? How about if they just transmit the budget to you and then we can meet jointly and they can? Discuss their votes? Is that true to what you're? You'd like to see happen or? Would I'm just trying to make it. Reflect what we actually do.
Okay, so if we say the Select Board. Shall transmit a copy of the budget together with its recommendation relative thereto to each member of the Finance Committee. Either at or before their joint. Meeting to finalize the budget for the following fiscal year.
That's that's good. That works.
Yeah. Good. All right.
That works.
Okay, Select Board will have to revoke that article as well.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on section sixteen uh by the Select Board? Any questions?
Do we have to reference the amendment that was just made or anything or?
That's what we're voting on.
Okay, perfect. All right.
So I'll move to a a vote. Alicia Greco?
Okay, yep.
So um do I do I have to move to vote on the language as amended?
The funny thing is here, we're all trying so hard not to not to violate the open meeting law or anything like that. It's making for a clumsy meeting.
Well, I know, and 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 Jean got me with the the motion. I don't know if I need to have a motion.
How about? How about a motion to vote?
Okay.
Sixteen.
As amended. Okay. Sorry.
Okay, roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Got a thumbs up there.
Okay, that's a yes. And and JR Colby, yes.
Okay, from the Finance Committee, um I'd entertain a motion to accept. The amendment to section sixteen, Article twenty two.
Make a motion.
Second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Erica? We'll take a roll call vote. Yes, that's good. Okay, Jean?
Yes.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
KV? Good. Linda? Yes? Okay, we got that and I'll I'll me yes on that. Okay.
Sorry, Marshall, I couldn't. It wouldn't let me. It was saying that the chairman wouldn't let me unmute. I'm sorry.
You're you're good now.
Yes.
Okay, Chairman Colby, back to you.
All right, that concludes the Select Board's business for tonight.
Move to adjourn.
So a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
From the Finance Committee, motion to adjourn?
Marshall?
Yes.
Don't we need to vote? On? I I in accordance with what Tracy suggested tonight?
Uh, yes, I think we can do that, actually. And so I would entertain a motion. To accept the votes that we had on our last meeting with respect to the articles that will be presented at the annual town meeting.
We're moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Erica? Yep, okay.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Good. KV? Good. Linda?
Yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. Okay, we are done. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. The roll call vote again. Erica?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes. KV?
Yes.
Okay, and Linda?
Yes.
Thank you all and good evening.
Happy Easter, everyone. Good night. Thank you.
Yeah.